Good morning, everyone. Today's Monday, May 17th, 2021. Time is 9:01 a.m. Welcome to our weekly, always on Monday, Commissioner's Status Update. 11:01, excuse me. I travel through the time zones on a periodic basis. What would that, that would have been Central, no, that would have been Hawaii. Oh, goodness. You can see where my head is at. Sorry. Okay, anyway, attending our Commissioners Duncan and Philios, Commissioner Bill Brooks is excused. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. First business item, grant application for Public Defense Commission, and this is a potential action item. Ann, come up, please. Ann, this is Ann Taylor, our public defender.
On the table in front of you is a copy of the submitted grant application. It's a little bit different this year. We worked with the PDC and with Dina and her office to get our numbers and to know how to fill out this form. Once we fill it out, I have to initial it, and then from there, it cannot be changed.
Okay.
We've done that, and now there's a signature page that's in the cross stacked in front of you, Commissioner Philios. That's for the Commissioners to each sign. The first section of this application talks about what we've spent in 2020. So it went backwards to have our completed year, so we'd report what happened in 2020. And then we were asked to go forward to project what would we need in 2022. And so the first part is the formula grant, what we need, and it's broken down in what we are spending that money on and what we're requesting to be funded. The third page talks about the amount remaining at the end of the year. And we think for the formula grant, there will be no money left at the end of the year. We think we'll use every dollar. The next page begins the workload compliance. And you can see that there's sort of some print underneath those lines that's cut off. I didn't have a really good way to print the dropdown menu, but what we put in that was we put what we're also asking for county-funded positions for increases in salary there, so that it would match. So that it wouldn't put me in a position of if you're a county-funded employee, you get this raise if that's what happens at budget time. If it doesn't happen at budget time, then we'll let the PDC know that we don't need it for workload too, because we want the positions to match.
Hey, okay.
The next page goes on with the other positions that are funded by the workload compliance grant. You'll see that in some of the other spaces, we asked for some additional funding for location, for space, for a yearly amount to go towards the rent. The dropdown there would have explained that the workload compliance grant caused us to increase by about 25% in size. And so we've asked for that much in rent should something happen with a rental location here. We've asked for two new positions through the workload compliance. We've asked for another investigator position and another administrative assistant position. So the technology total that you see is us asking for the computer and software setup for each potential workload employee. The other expenses, you can kind of see the requested raise amount there for the attorneys. We've also asked for Westlaw, which is our legal research electronic database that we have to pay for attorneys for. This amount goes just directly to the workload compliance attorneys. So we're asking that that bucket be increased to help the county pay for those costs, so that the county doesn't bear those costs. On our next page in Section 6, when we talk about the amount of anticipated workload compliance money, that's just a really rough estimate. And we've been working with Dina and with Payroll Department and with our own records that talk about what positions have been left open and vacant. So we'll have a total once we do our annual report at the end of the year, but that's just our estimate now. Under Section Number 7, based on our annual review, we were not found deficient. So I marked that we're in compliance with the standards. The last page, I think that is for Jim Brannon to sign, but again, the Commissioner's signature page is in front of you.
That's the attestation.
And this has to be sent before 5:00 p.m. Mountain Time today. So if that is signed, I will happily send it. Or attached to that page for your signature is an email to me. And highlighted is the area where the address is, and that's just attached to the signature page.
Okay. So, Ann, just a couple of questions. I'm looking at the second page, Item 2.
Yes.
Okay, so the 1.571 mil, that's what we received from PDC?
Yes.
Okay. What are we, or would this actually, would this sum up to, what is our request for fiscal '22? Is there a summation?
So the total request, remember, we're talking about two different buckets of money. For the, just the regular grant amount, the formula grant, we're asking for 921.
922,000? Okay, go ahead.
And let's see if I can figure out, and yes, then, and I didn't number my pages very well.
That's okay.
But a few pages back, after you see the workload compliance, there's a couple of pages of workload compliance. The first is the attorneys.
Yes.
Next page has the investigators and the assistants. And then at the bottom of that, that's 1.3. That's what we're asking for, for workload compliance from the Public Defense Commission or the state of Idaho. No.
Are they additive?
The 1.5 from 2021.
Oh, included both?
Yeah, that was the total, and so it's broken down into two. So it's an ask for an increase from the state of Idaho to contribute to this county.
So is it 1365 plus the 922, okay, that they're additive, okay. All right.
No, I think we're good. I found the two spots I was looking for, and yeah, good.
I think we're fine. Let's see if they're going to be feeling generous, right? Okay, so you need us to sign the attestation?
I do, and I need that submitted to the Public Defense Commission before 5:00.
I'm going to do a motion first.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I move that we approve the grant application as presented by the public defender for the Public Defense Commission.
Second.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion is carried to approve the submission, and I guess we sign under our respective districts?
I would ask we handle Item Number 3 ahead of Item Number 2, just so Ann can leave.
Okay, sure. Oh, this is the one with the, where we had to recalculate?
Are you going to need Commissioner Brooks' signature, or you think 2 is sufficient?
Is he available to sign today?
He will.
He'll be back.
Later today.
Yeah, for the 1:00 meeting.
I think it's better to get his signature.
Why don't we just leave it here then, and I'll see that he signs it at 1:00. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, cool.
I can either come by later to get it, or I believe there was a paper clipped page to that that had the, an address to send it to.
Well, is Dina sending something for you?
Dina will have Jim Brannon's signature page, I think. That has to be submitted.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, this goes to the Public Defense Commission.
Why don't I come back by and, okay.
Yeah, and we do too. We would just need to ask Bill's permission.
And I can just come by after the 1:00 meeting. I think I also have a 1:00 meeting, so I can just come up and pick it up.
Yeah, and I can call him right now. Does anybody have a cellphone?
Well, we can do it after the meeting.
Want to do it after the meeting?
Yeah, just in case he gets here on time.
Why don't I just come by about 1:45 and then pick it up?
That'll work.
And then I can pick up one from Dina and send them both. It's better that the Public Defense Commission gets more than one copy.
All right, so I'll leave this here for him. It's not going to go anywhere. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So, okay, so then we're going to skip over Item Number 2. We'll come back to it. Skipping to Item Number 3. Percent change in the funding for public defender, full-time investigator. Leslie?
Yeah, but Ann will speak to it.
Go ahead, Ann, please.
So I apologize. What happened was I asked the county to make our now-part-time investigator a full-time investigator, but I think I had a miscommunication when we estimated the amount of money it would take. I think what happened was when I talked about the county paying 50% to make full-time, I think I miscommunicated that I needed the county to pay the whole 50%. And so the calculation was for not 50%, but like 25%, but then with the loaded costs, it came out at 23%. What I really meant to propose is that the county pay 50% of the full-time employees, so half the wages plus the loaded costs, because I'm asking the county to make it a full-time position. So it's, it would be, I think the way we do it, because of how we have to split things in the system, is a 60-40 split, so that the PDC money would just pay for half the wages, but the county would pay the loaded cost plus the other half of the wages.
So we're picking up the 60%?
Yes. That's my, that was my real ask, and I apologize for the confusion.
What was the total? Was it like 15,000 or something for the rest of this year?
Yes, it, I think it's just under 15,000 for the rest of this year.
All right. And then when we come back on the 20, May 21st, is that number already calculated in the stuff you gave me?
That will be updated.
Good. Okay. Yep, I'm fine with it.
And your budget's okay?
Yes.
Yeah, and this will be approved tomorrow's business meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Yep. Thank you, Ann. Okay, Item Number 2, skipping back to Item Number 2. Okay, so as part of the, I want to get this right, the American?
Yeah.
Recovery?
Rescue Plan.
American Recovery, right. American Rescue Plan by the, I guess, put forth by the current administration. It has been indicated, and we do, I understand, have to apply for the money, is we are destined to receive, if all goes well and et cetera, approximately $32,184,700. And this is a payment that would come, if accepted, applied for and accepted, in two stages. The first payment would be received this month, the second half, first half this month, second half 12 months hence, and that would be next May. Again, $32,184,700. So the three points that I guess I'd like to make, and we can discuss them, is we do have to apply for the money, and so clearly, we need to understand those conditions. Now, some of them have been spelled out, so to speak. And one of the questions that I have, and it's actually on the positive side, is can we use that money for the new building? And so, well, go ahead, Dina.
Continue.
Okay. So essentially, going through some of the conditions that have already been presented to us, one of the items that's indicated is, as acceptable is capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs, which when we're dealing with courtrooms, that may qualify, and ventilation improvements in key settings like, such as healthcare facilities. Obviously, we don't operate those. The other point that was being made, and along, basically along the same lines of capital improvements, is capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs are also eligible, such as physical plant improvements to public hospitals, not us. Health clinics are adaptations to public buildings to implement COVID-19 mitigation tactics. And bear in mind that we had to shift jury selection when COVID was active to the fairgrounds. So building a building or expanding what we have, and I'll get to that, where we are set up for those operational requirements could, could work, okay? The other thing that's spelt, that's indicated, is to provide premium pay for essential workers, which I believe most of us in the county fall under, which is offering additional support to those who have borne and bear the greatest health benefits and services in critical infrastructure sectors. So go right ahead. I was going to go to a couple of other points, but go ahead. So basically, what I wanted to do was say, okay, guys, let's set up a committee. I've got some people identified to look into this and say, okay, can we, should we apply? Does it make sense? Can we use the money in some capacity or another? When I mentioned the capital improvements, I'm not necessarily confining myself to building a new building from the ground up. It might involve expanding the court facilities in the new, in the new court building and building around that. I don't know, okay? And what I wanted to do was form this committee. I've got a number of names of folks that I'd like to see on it that represent the different sectors, and I can go through that. Basically, yourself, Dina, Sylvia, Marissa Garza, District Court, Pete Barnes, Greg Manley, Buildings and Grounds, Steve Matheson for the financial expertise, Barry McHugh, or his designate, and Nancy Pluff. And that's my recommendation. I'll go one step further. I'd like Nancy to chair it, if you will, because ultimately, we would have to make, we, the board, have to make the decision, and for that reason. But anyway, please, go forward.
So to add to that group, and actually, I've already been talking with RMO about this, because this is a grant. So because it's federal money, we need that grant expertise. I've talked to my team. We've kicked around the idea of putting together a small group to review the rules first. And Keith and I talked to our external auditors about this.
Okay, go ahead.
Had a conversation about this Friday. So first thing is, we don't have to rush into this, because we have several years. It's, there's not a time limit like there was with the last round of money. The other part of it is, is the Treasury rules, about 128 pages, are not final. So our auditors urge that we not rush into anything, because those rules are probably going to change. Now, there are some, there are some specific things that we can use the money for. There are also other localities in our county that are going to be receiving separate payments, like the city of Coeur d'Alene. And then the state will be given a chunk of money that they will hand out to smaller localities that are under a certain threshold. So there's still appropriations that haven't been determined yet. But once that happens, our, in the words of our external auditors, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. This is an enormous amount of money. And they suggested that perhaps we get our ducks in a row and we sit down with some other community leaders that are also managing part of this money and talk about how we can coordinate our efforts, so we're not duplicating. We're all on the same path as far as how we're using the money. So I would say first that the big push in this money is for water, sewer, broadband. Those are spelled out completely. As far as premium pay, it's not real specific, but it tends to lean towards law enforcement and healthcare workers. I don't know if we can do beyond that. I know that with the last tranche of money that we received, we did pay for overtime for law enforcement. So that's already been paid. So this premium pay thing is still fairly nebulous. And then other things, mitigating COVID, we weren't hit with COVID like a lot of other areas. So with a lot of the things that are talked about in the documents, and I also was on a webcast with the White House, where the person who's managing this program, you know, they're focusing on areas decimated by COVID, areas where things are still shut down, where people are still stuck at home, where businesses haven't opened. Really, we have been very open and very active. So we may not be able to spend it all, depending upon what we can use it for.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out, where are you going with this?
So I'm saying that, yes, I think that we need to get together and talk about how this money can be spent, but with the caveat that we still don't have all of the information yet of how it can be spent. And I wouldn't ask for a distribution of money until we have determined what we want to spend it on.
Okay.
When I talked to RMO, Jody suggested that we sit down with an attorney, one of Barry's attorneys, and go through the information we have, write up a summary, and then maybe go to the departments and have them write a list of what they think they need according to the guidelines. But we want to identify what the guidelines would be for the county, based on what we know about grants and what we understand to be with legal and RMO, and then have the, have the groups put their lists together, evaluate those lists, and then bring those to you with what we think is appropriate. So, you know, if you want to put a team together, I think that that's a great idea.
You know, and I had considered RMO, but I guess the question that I had is, do you consider this a grant?
It is a grant. It has a CFDA number, and it's subject to all the rules of federal grants. They even, on the White House webinar, they kept referring to it as a federal grant. So all those federal grant rules do apply. We have to use our DUNES number and all of our login information onto their portal, based on what we use for our federal grants. So it is a grant. So I would think that we would follow, we would do the same thing that we did with the last round of grant money. We would follow the same process that we set up for the COVID task force, and that we would have legal sit down and go through and give us some guidelines, so that we could kind of get our arms around what the scope of it is. And then we can provide that to you, hopefully save some time, add some clarity.
So basically, I think what you're saying is add RMO.
Absolutely, and maybe have a smaller group just to determine what the scope is first. We may not need 20 people in the room. Maybe we just get auditor and RMO and legal together and sit down and weed through the details and try to figure out what exactly applies to us.
Okay. So you're suggesting shortening, lessening the group?
Yeah, and we've already talked about doing this, so we've kind of already have this in the works. But what we wanted to do is present the board with something that's concise and kind of already reviewed. And then from there, yes, we could bring in departments or have departments make lists of what, based on the guidelines, what they would need or what we could use it for. At first blush, I don't know that we could use it to build a building. It doesn't look like that's what it's about. And if we are tasked with using this money to give to businesses or other areas hit by COVID in the area, we'd have to talk to legal, because we don't know what the Idaho statutory limitations are on giving out aid. And we also would have to hire some kind of an administrator to do that sort of thing, because we don't have the bandwidth to do that. So, yeah, we'd have to have a third party administering any kind of...
So who would you suggest initially?
I don't even know who that third party would be.
No, 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 not that.
Just for the initial.
In terms of looking at the...
RMO, auditor, legal.
No, I want BOCC there, too.
Sure.
Okay, so you're thinking, when you say auditor, are you thinking I, Bailey?
No, us.
Oh, you guys, okay. When you say, okay.
Yeah, Keith and myself, Jody, Kim, and one of our, one or two of our legal representatives, and just sit down and go through it.
Yeah, and then Nancy Pluff.
Yeah.
Okay. Dina, Jody, or Kim, Nancy, who was the other?
Legal.
Legal, obviously. So let's just say Barry?
Sure, and then Hillis sign.
Whoever he chooses to designate, yeah. Okay, so basically, you guys are looking at, just so that we're all on the same page, proper use of the funds?
Right. What are the guidelines? And then monitor that, because the Treasury rules are not final.
Okay.
Right.
How much time do you think we have?
Oh.
As to whether or not to take the money?
Well, we have until the end of 2024 to spend this money.
To spend it?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this. Let's say the first stage is this month, and we were to take that money and just simply bank it.
Right.
Set it aside, because who knows what could happen over the, over the next two to three years? I don't know. That's just a question. I don't know if we can do that.
If we take the first tranche, we would have to put it in a separate fund.
Yes.
And any interest that was earned on that money would have to go back to the U.S. Treasury.
And that's fine.
I just rather not take anything unless we know we can use it. I think that's a lot of hassle, unless we know. And all I saw at first glance was sewer infrastructure. The airport is going to need to replace six miles of lines eventually. So that may be one use that's spelled out.
And water, too. We have this study going, EPA study. Could it be applied to Lake Coeur d'Alene? I mean, there, there are bigger things that may...
It seemed like municipal water, not Lake Health.
Okay.
So.
But again, something we have to look at.
Until you dig into it, yeah.
And again, I'm not giving up on the new building, because I, I have a suspicion we might be able to do it. But that's something...
If we could, that would be great.
Yeah, because with a 2/3 vote necessary for the general bond, general obligation, that's going to, that's going to be tough. And even if it did pass, and this were permissible, that is to say, to be able to use the money, that would certainly help. But anyway, okay, fair enough. So we're talking four people, Dina, Jody, Jody or Kim, Barry, one of his designates, and Nancy Pluff, okay? So you guys probably need to get cooking on this.
Sure.
Okay. Do we, I don't know that we need a motion, do we? Is it just direction?
Yep.
All right, then. Anybody else want to speak to this? Nancy, Nancy, Nancy or Nancy? No? Okay. Okay. Pending status. County Forum of Government Study Committee Commission meets for the, for the first official time tonight. Anything you want to add or say? So last week was a primer, primer, as they say?
Last week, we had training. Most of the group have created email addresses for that purpose.
Okay, fair enough. I did speak to Barry very briefly. We did receive a legal opinion, and I obviously can't, I don't want to sacrifice client confidentiality, but any requests for legal opinions should be flowing through the BOCC and from us, too. Okay, fair enough. Okay. Facilities expansion. Leslie?
So once again, they met last week, and we'll know soon when they're ready to present the long-range plan that they're working on.
Okay.
They met last week on the 13th and 14th, but we don't have when they're going to be done.
Pack Airport Lease?
You told Bill to contact Stephen.
Oh. Which I think he, I don't know if he did. I'll follow that up. I will follow that up. 1A, 1B Audio Upgrade, you're on schedule to second week, June?
June.
We have a planning meeting in September.
Okay. Financial Snapshot, that's...
June 7th will be, yeah.
Status update in June. Valid Bond Language?
And Building Financing. So I'm looking at now an entire picture of, first of all... So I'm looking at now an entire picture of, first of all, as this budget season increases, you know, we get further down the line, we'll know what's available in the URD returning and new growth. When we get our long-range plan, I think that's the time to then go ahead and talk about the building, financing, and ballot bond language and all that, once we get the long-range plan back.
And that's the one from LCA?
Yes, yep.
I did have a question on that, now it escapes me. Oh, okay. This is not on the agenda, but I think it's probably relevant. 389, the governor signed it?
Yeah, I didn't hear if he signed it or not, but it would have gone back into law if he didn't sign it anyway.
Yeah, so 8% is our cap, it doesn't matter what new growth you have, it's just 8%.
However, we get there. And that's 8% on the taxable revenue?
That's 8% of what last year's tax was, that's the max.
Which was, okay.
Right, and we don't have a new growth number, we don't have a URD number, but it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Stop it.
Okay, so last year was, and I'm just going to round it off, like 50 mil, maybe it was 49 something, I'm not sure.
51.
Okay, so that would cap us at just over 4 mil.
Although, I want to, I want to go look again, because in the notes I had, it said that URD didn't, you could have, URD could exceed the 8%. So I think there's still some details that we're not 100% clear on. IAC is supposed to roll out something, so...
Is that, are we going to hear about this on Wednesday?
We are Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes, actually, we'll know Thursday, and you'll know too, because you'll be there.
Yeah, yeah.
The 20th, yep.
Anything on forgone? Was that capped at 1?
1% for operating, which means reoccurring every year, and then 3% for capital projects one time only, and then you lose that for the following year.
So that would be 3% of the forgone balance?
That we have not, I think it's...
That's another one.
Is it 3% of the forgone balance, or is it 3% of the tax?
I, we think it's 3% of the tax, however, that is still not clear. So I believe it is 3% of the tax, which would be 1.5 million.
We could have definitive information for your meeting on the 21st, with where we are with all that.
Okay, cool. Okay, good. What's your take? What's your gut? What's your best guesses to the impact to our budget? Let me, I'll just open it up broad.
I think what's going to hurt us the most is that we're growing so fast and have precluded from using that new growth to help fund our operations, that we're going to reach a point where we're just going to have to cut services, because personnel is our biggest expense. So, I mean, we'll do the best we can with what they give us, but this year, we've got extra for Medicaid expansion through Panhandle Health. Once we're not able to use that county assistance money and county assistance kind of goes away, that's going to be 1.6 million right off the top every year before we even start our budget. So, things are going to get tight.
And the one thing I do want to remind everybody, if we were to build this new building, it comes with additional staff. We will have to fund bodies, so just want to, and then when we have our long-range meeting, I will hopefully remember to point that out as well.
Anything else? Thank you, Dina. Public comment? Hearing none, 11:35, as opposed to 9:35. Meeting adjourned.